Can this please call the law?
Member McGarry?
Here.
Member Burden?
Present.
Member O'Donnell?
Here.
Member Cozart?
Here.
Member Primm?
Here.
Member Batten?
Here.
Okay, if there's any public comment relative to matters that might be of interest to the Commission that are not subject to items that are on the agenda, this would be the time. Anyone here raise their hand if that's the case. If not, then we'll go to the minutes. Deverell.
Oh, I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Come to the podium, please.
I'm sorry.
This is for an item that would not be on the agenda for either of you.
I did not see that on the agenda here, but I understand there's a variance conversation about Jessica Road property, Jessica Lane property. Is that incorrect?
That public hearing was actually canceled.
Okay. Sorry, has been rescheduled and that would be all I can ask.
Actually, it will not be coming forward to the Plan Commission. We were reviewing the property to write a report so it could come here tonight, and we realized that the variance actually wasn't necessary for them to build a single-family home, so it was just canceled as a whole.
Okay, okay, then let me ask my interest in that if I may. Well, I'm here. I own property on Jessica Lane and I understand it's been a bankrupted subdivision that was approved by the village, I'm thinking in the, you know, 2005-ish range. It hasn't been plowed in probably 10 years, so my question is, what can be done or who can I talk to about getting that on a plowing schedule? And am I in the right meeting to discuss that? Because my understanding is that once a subdivision goes bankrupt, there's an obligation for the municipality to assume the maintenance of the road to some event or to some level. And I'd like to just get some clarity on that at some point. Not urgent, obviously, but a lot of conversation for the hearing with the variance, was here to bring it up.
Yeah, certainly. I would definitely recommend speaking with the Homer Township Highway Department. They would be the people you'd want to talk to about any changes to the plowing schedules.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you. We have minutes to approve from March 15th meeting. First of all, I have one item I'd like to suggest, a request for amendment. On page number 10, under section 7, the words written implies that our mayor initiated the conversation, and that would not be the case. I'd like the first sentence to read the chairman initial, inform the mayor, and then it can go on from there. He was in full support, but he did not initiate that. I simply informed him of the intention to do that, and he indicated his support. Are there any other comments to alter to the minutes? If not, I'd like a motion, nothing approved as amended. I'm going to approve first by Commissioner O'Donnell, second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Primm. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, for both of the cases that we have in front of us, those that have signed in and wish to speak, please stand, and the last thing to be sworn in.
Please stand up, please. Please raise your right hand and say adieu after the following: "I swear to tell the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God."
Okay, our first case tonight is number HG1727S, PI Tower Developments. This is a continuation of a public hearing that was deferred to this date. DJ, are you going to present that? Now we have some items to follow.
Certainly. So I'll start with the staff report. I know we have quite a few presentations as part of this. So this case was referred back from the village board on January 24th to, with the directive that the Plan Commission, we look at this case and come back with substantial and complete evidence. And the applicant was advised to come back with additional info, and some of the items that were brought up at the village board meeting were, the applicant needs to show they did exhaustive search for the alternate sites, and provide a clear picture of the search ring, and also state how they would like to conceal the monopole of the tower, and also clearly state the ultimate build-out on the subject property, what is the extent of the build-out on this property. So since the case came back to the March 1st Plan Commission meeting and was tabled, as you're well aware of that, and since then, the village hired Mr. Stu Chapman, who's sitting right across me, to kind of take a look at this case, the propagation map given to us by Verizon, and the zoning application, and give us some additional insight before we get into the public testimony. With that, I would like to advise Stu, or he can speak from there.
Thank you. And thank you for this opportunity to appear for the Plan Commission to discuss some aspects of this proposed cell site. As you're aware, the applicant, Verizon Wireless, seeks to build a 150-foot tower, which includes a two-foot lightning rod, on a parcel near a residence at 17239 South Parker Road. This particular site is away from the roadway by a considerable distance. It is also planned to be built in an area which is largely surrounded by forests. It's areas of agricultural, as we're all aware, and the applicant also plans to build a base station along with the monopole tower on a 100-foot by 100-foot east parcel. Mr. Gaddy asked me to look specifically at propagation maps provided by Verizon's representative Insight Inc., and also to look at other aspects of the application on which a comment would be useful. So in doing so, I looked at the propagation maps, and over the last 22 years that I've been doing wireless consulting, I've seen a lot of propagation maps. One thing that I was asked to look at is was the accuracy of the maps, and also the effect of the maps, were these maps true to form in terms of their coverage? While I wish I had a little more specific information concerning specific levels, measurable levels of coverage, that information, I am told by Insight is proprietary to Verizon, and they did not wish to have it, specific information released. So I looked at the maps in terms of the general coverage areas that they project through the tower, and what I know of the coverage zones for other similar towers of similar heights. What I did determine from the coverage, the propagation maps, was that they were generally accurate, that the coverage zone from the proposed tower is approximately one to one and a half miles, depending on which way the signal is oriented. Also, the maps also emphasize coverage to the west, south, and southeast directions, where there's a mix of recreational areas within Messenger Woods, and also residential areas. Coverage would certainly improve within those residential areas, particularly to the west and south and southeast. If there are Verizon subscribers down there currently, or subscribers who would like to obtain their service, at the present time, signal coverage is probably very weak for them. And it has also other implications for other types of users of Verizon service, including public safety. I also, in looking at the application, the materials sent by Mr. Gaddy, I also looked at the safety concerns that the three first responder agencies, actually there were more, because one contained about seven or eight agencies that signed a joint letter, have with respect to communicating within Messenger Woods. And they all expressed considerable concern that they have difficulty using Verizon, receiving Verizon signals within Messenger Woods and the surrounding area. When you look, going back and looking at the propagation maps, there was a donut hole, literally, of moderate to strong coverage, surrounding Messenger Woods and adjacent neighborhoods due to Verizon's presence on cell towers to the north on 159th Street, and to the west towards 355, and to the south. But that particular area between the roughly Parker Road and all the way out past the woods is what Verizon indicates is unreliable coverage. Well, unreliable coverage, if you were to quantify it, would probably be anywhere from 40 to 60 percent less than the strongest coverage that you would see if you were within close proximity to the tower. So when the various fire protection districts, the Will County Sheriff, and Orland Township indicate that their public safety first responders are unable to communicate within that donut hole, as it were, that gives some plausible concern. And one thing that should be noted is that, and it's in the report, and I'll just kind of touch on it, is that AT&amp;T has been authorized by the federal government to build a public safety communication system called FirstNet, which the state of Illinois joined at the end of December. This FirstNet would allow local, county, township, state, and federal first responder agencies to communicate with each other on a shared network in the event of an emergency, particularly say maybe a weather-related emergency like a tornado, or a serious blizzard or something of that nature, as well as other types of emergencies, and maybe toxic spills or rail leaks, that sort of thing. Verizon also has a network that they are also trying to build for their subscribers in the public safety domain. Seventy percent of public safety agencies utilize Verizon services. And I would say that it is nationally, but I would say there's probably a pretty good chance that one of the first responder agencies or more who submitted letters to the Plan Commission either are Verizon users or would like to be Verizon users. It's important. Public safety needs are transitioning rapidly from older analog networks using traditional trunked radio systems to all wireless coverage. And I believe Verizon, Insight Inc. have representatives here tonight who might want to speak to that from their perspective. But that's an area of significant importance. Another area that I also looked at was concerns over the effects of the cell towers on property values. And I just want to mention that cellular services and utility is considered to be sort of in the same categories cable television, landline, telephone, and other forms of fiber-optic communications, broadband communications. Township assessors and appraisers look at a wide variety of factors when determining the valuation of a single-family property or a multi-family property of a farm or an apartment complex, that sort of thing. They look at a variety of things ranging from number of bedrooms, number of stories of the unit, to roadway access, number of garage spaces, and so forth. Utilities are not a major factor in the creation of that valuation. That's not to say that they aren't, but that they're just not, you know, at the top of the list. Finally, and perhaps the village attorney can speak to specific case law concerning property valuation of cell towers. There are some things on, in Illinois case law nationally as well. But there's two other comments I want to discuss briefly before, you know, I turn it back. And one is that there's been some concerns about the effects of radio frequency that this tower might generate. One thing that I can speak to with regard to the law is that with regard to denying a cell tower application on the basis of radio frequency effects, it is completely forbidden to municipalities under the Telecommunications Act of 1996. The FCC and Congress expressly preempted and prohibited municipalities in states and counties from establishing their own RF standards, radio frequency standards, or from enforcing that which only the FCC has the ability to enforce. So it's important to underscore the point that municipalities cannot deny on those grounds. The other point is that, first, that I think there may be some misconceptions out there as to just how much power these antennas and towers radiate. This particular tower, as noted by Verizon, would indicate, excuse me, would radiate 1,000 watts. That's about as much as a low-power radio station. And to put it in more, perhaps, everyday terms, the average handheld hairdryer generates between 1,500 and 1,875 watts of power. 1,000 watts is not a lot of power. The power from antennas by major radio broadcasters like WBDM and WGN are anywhere from 20,000 to 50,000 watts, 20,000 to 50,000 watts. So these are pretty low-power towers and antennas. So municipalities can determine whether or not the FCC, whether or not the applicant is meeting FCC regulations. And if they are, that's fine. And in this case, this tower is well beneath the FCC's limit of 2,000 watts for a cell tower used for personal wireless services. The other thing that a municipality can do is if, if there is an excess of power that exceeds FCC regulations, they can, a municipality can notify the applicant that it appears that you're exceeding them, exceeding the regulations, and it'd be helpful if, you know, you got back under. But it's up to the FCC to enforce that. Other than that, that's basically the report that I submitted to Mr. Gaddy in a nutshell. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question. When you, you're referring to the donut hole area, where exactly is that donut hole area? Is it west of, or is it east, I'm sorry, is it east of the proposed site?
Some of it is, most of it's actually to the west. The area of coverage runs from east of the site along the Comet Power Grid, all the way out towards Cedar Road.
So the donut hole goes as far as Cedar Road?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And I have a question. In other cases, have cell companies withheld information, which you said is proprietary information? Is that common, or is this something that you just gotten this time?
It's more common now than it used to be. One reason is the federal government in 2015 enacted what's called the Spectrum Act. It was actually a piece of legislation attached to a tax relief bill that was signed into law in 2014. Within the Spectrum Act, which governs a period of review for municipalities, states, counties regarding cell site applications, one of the provisions of that act was that a municipality may not ask for information that is relevant to the business activities of the carrier. Some cellular carriers have interpreted that as meaning you're asking for, when asking for decimal levels, you know, concerning what's good, and what's fair, and what's excellent coverage, what's lousy coverage, they consider that to be going a bit too far and getting too much into their business. So that's, before 2015, when this went into effect, that wasn't all that much of a problem to get that information. But also, cellular companies have been using that against one another too, saying, "Our coverage is better, and Brand X is not."
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woodman. Very thorough report.
Thank you.
We have Mr. Silverman here with us tonight, representing the village as an attorney. Do you have any additional comments?
Sure, I can just make a couple preliminary comments, and then if you have any questions, as we go along, I'm happy to answer them. We could, oh, I'm sorry. Is that better? Thank you. Again, my name is Dave Silverman. I'm an attorney of the law for Mahoney Silverman &amp; Crossing, we're the legal counsel for the village. So I've been asked just to provide a little bit of background information, things that you should think about as you're hearing the evidence that's presented to you tonight. First of all, if the village board ends up denying this application, we have to provide a written reason why we've denied the application. And that written, that written reason or statement has to be based on what the courts and what the FCC has characterized as substantial evidence in the case. So there has to be substantial evidence that they don't meet the standards that are set forth in your ordinance. And just a couple of things to remember, evidence is not, according to the numerous courts that have decided this, it's not just a subjective fear, or complaint, or the fact that somebody doesn't want it there. It really, it really has to be evidence that shows it doesn't meet the criteria in your ordinance. So as you go through this tonight, think about that, and make sure maybe sift through, you know, an unsupported opinion versus what would be the actual evidence in the case. So the, a couple of the major factors that you should also think about tonight is, one of them that's really important is this lack of service area. The courts and the FCC have been pretty stringent on making sure that all providers have equal access to all areas. Well, there may be some areas where there are small, very small donut holes, you know, this seems to be a rather large area where there is no service, so I think you should consider that carefully when you're making your decision, you know, if you believe that evidence that there is a large donut hole, and if there is, with placing this tower there as opposed to somewhere else, help that to achieve the non-discrimination status that's required. So you have a number of factors, and I can go through those if you like, they're in your zoning ordinance, you have really two sets of factors. One is the typical special use factors that DJ has, Mr. Candy has put into his report, and they're the same factors that you're looking at, and each in every special use. And additionally, for a cell tower of this nature, there are 13 other factors that are in there. Proximity to the towers and residential structures and residential district boundaries, nature of uses on adjacent nearby properties, the surrounding topography, surrounding tree coverage and foliage, proposed egress and egress, whether it's sufficient, whether the design of the tower eliminates the intrusiveness to the extent possible, the impact of the tower on the area within, that's recently affected by it, the efforts made by the applicant to investigate alternative sites for the tower that would reduce the impact upon surrounding areas. And I think that was one of the things that you talked to Verizon to come back and explain to you a little bit, you know, what they did, and whether there are any other sites that would help to do this and would be available to them. The efforts made by co-locations, or where that they could co-locate in the area, so I think you should hear from them about that question. Will the construction of this tower have any impact on future development of the village as a whole, and it courts with its comprehensive plan? The effect on provision and availability of telecommunications services within the village? Is it necessary or helpful to have this tower there in order to enhance the services to people in the village? And the effort made by the applicant to utilize the stealth design in connection with the proposed tower? And also, you know, have they complied with your application's? So those are the factors that you consider when you hear the testimony, and then, you know, obviously at the end of the night, it'll be asked to make a decision on recommendation, either positive or negative to the village board. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you might be able to go along, or when it comes time for you to leave.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Silverman. I feel almost like playing a straight man right now, but for clarification only, the applicant is not asking for any variance, special use permit. So I assume, and I'd like you to verify then, that they meet all of the village's zoning requirements.
I would point to Mr. Gaddy to do that. He's reviewed this. I think it is special use, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
But they comply with the zoning requirements, they might understand it.
So a variance would not be required?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on Mr. Silverman or the commission this time? Okay, if not, I'd like to have a motion to...
I did have a question.
Oh, sorry. I mean?
Regarding measurement, output measurements. How is it measured? Who measures it? Who holds responsibility for compliance to the federal regulations?
Well, I'd ask for Mr. Chairman to maybe help me out on that, because it's not the village of Homer Township, can you guarantee you that?
No, Verizon is responsible for measuring its power output from the tower. They're responsible for complying with FCC radio frequency regulations. If it is determined by the FCC that they're in violation of those regulations, then Verizon is responsible for coming into compliance.
So then they're self-monitored?
They're self-monitor, but perhaps the gentleman from Insight Inc. can discuss that in greater detail.
Okay, I appreciate that during the public hearing, when the applicant has an opportunity to make his presentation. And if it isn't answered, please remind us.
So the applicant has a PowerPoint presentation, I just wanted to remind you before the public testimony.
Would you like to have that done before the public hearing?
It's up to you, it's entirely up to you.
I would rather open the public hearing and have it record as we did before as part of the public hearing. So then, a motion to open the public hearing?
A motion to open the public hearing.
First by Commissioner Primm.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner McGarry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then, petitioner, applicant, please take this time to make your presentation.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Mark Lane. I work for Insight Inc. Couple of terms that you heard speak last time.
You make sure you're directly into the mic, or it'll sound like sometimes the acoustics don't serve us well.
Is this better?
Much better.
Much better. I can hear myself, it's scary. So my name is Mark Lane. I'm with Insight Real Estate Inc. We are a consultant firm that assists Verizon Wireless We are a consultant firm that assists Verizon Wireless in their locating of antenna sites for their network development plans. Couple of gentlemen that you heard speak last week, we work for the same company. They asked me to come this time because I have a bit of a history with this site. I was just talking to Dave. I believe it was 2008, we were doing work for T-Mobile. And T-Mobile had a similar coverage deficit in the same location. And we were, I was working with the same property owners on possibly putting a tower in the same location. The, as Mr. Chapman pointed out, and you know, we'll show this on the coverage maps, there is a significant hole in wireless coverage in this area. And it's not just Verizon, everybody has an issue with this area. I remember at the time when I was working on the T-Mobile site, I had T-Mobile phone and you could not get signal at all on Parker Road near that S curve. So if we could, so I want to rehash everything that you've seen before, but we know what the site is.
We don't have it.
Yes, we don't have it.
You don't have it? Okay.
We don't have it.
So, the property address is 17239 South Parker Road.
Put your hands up just a second. See if these work.
Okay.
Okay?
We're on.
Okay, good. Yeah, so this map just shows a pushpoint where the proposed location of the tower that we, if we skip ahead, here, zoom in on this particular part of the property where the tower compound would be located. Right behind the property, about 300 feet to the east is the Comodite Rightway. Normally, and I'm sure you've been told this, when a wireless carrier is looking for an antenna location, the first thing that we try to do is find an existing structure to attach to. There could be an existing cell tower, there could be a building rooftop, there could be a water tank. And in this case Verizon has an agreement, a master license agreement with Comend to attach to their electric transmission towers. But that, those attachments are at Comend's discretion. And while we have, in fact, I've been before the Ulrichland Village Board several times for attachments to other Comodite Towers within the village's limits, these particular towers, this particular circuit are serving a sensitive customer, according to Comend, and so they will not allow any attachments to those circuits that are east of the subject So this is the, this is the coverage prediction map of the location, the donut hole that we've been discussing. The yellow, light green areas are what Verizon considers to be unreliable coverage. This means that you may have coverage, sometimes you may not have coverage, you're going to drop calls, it's going to be inconsistent outdoors. So various things impact the efficiency of the signal, and I talked about that in a second here. But the yellow, the light green areas are the trouble areas that Verizon is trying to solve to provide reliable coverage that people depend on. This slide shows the sector dots. You can see it completely eliminates the yellow, eliminates almost all of the light green. It leaves some green, but it does a pretty good job of wiping off that donut hole that we've been discussing. So a little bit on how this, you know, how these antennas work, right? The antennas, a wireless antenna is a directional beam antenna. So the signals, the signal comes out of the antenna in a straight line, basically. And because it travels in a straight line, various things impact the signal. Topography is a big one. So because it's going in a straight line, it's not going to go into valleys and come back up. And it's not going to move, it's not going to move in a serpentine fashion, it's going to go in a straight line. So if it's at a high point, it's going to stretch across a valley. If it's at a low point, it will fill the valley. So if we go to the next, the next couple of slides, one of the questions that was asked in the last meeting is will any of these existing towers that are surrounding the donut, surrounding the coverage gap, will they reach into the coverage gap and resolve the problem? So the Mid-American Tower is arrow pointing to it on the upper, maybe about 10 o'clock on the map. That is a prediction picture with that tower turned on. You can see it doesn't come close to reaching the center of the donut. The AT&amp;T Tower next to it, same story. It doesn't, it doesn't impact the donut at all. The Illinois State Tower over on 255 does not come close to reaching the coverage area. Global Tower, front of south on 355 does not reach the coverage area. So the reason you're seeing, the reason that those surrounding towers won't reach this area is because of the topography and the elevation of the ground. So I took a couple, I took a couple notes here. The ground elevation near the subject site is 700 feet, so that's, that's the mean sea level elevation. I don't know if I've ever way described it. The ground elevation is about 700 feet. The street level at Parker and Chicago Bloomington Road is 736 feet. So you've got a 35-foot change of grade from Chicago Bloomington Road, Parker, to the area where the, where the subject property is located. The curve, the S curve where Parker Road turns, makes a right angle and then goes north, is at 681 feet, which is a 55-foot difference from Chicago, Parker to the subject site. So what's happening is, the reason that none of these surrounding sites can cover that donut is because of the ground elevation. Those surrounding antennas, those surrounding towers are a higher ground elevation, the beam is coming straight out of the antennas, and so you've got a, you've got a valley, the beam is going straight over the top of the valley and it's not reaching down into the valley, which is why the site to serve that need to fill that donut hole has to be down in that lower elevation so it can cover the area that is deficient right now. Let's see, what else here? So as Mr. Chapman pointed out, the main reason we're here really is public safety. We've got a letter in the presentation signed by the Homer Fire Protection District, the Mokena Fire Protection District, the New Lenox Fire Protection District, Orland Fire Protection District, and Northwest Homer Fire Protection District that says, "We have expressed a loss of stabilized cellular connectivity in the general area between 167th Street and Bloomington Road." So what they're saying is, is that we don't have, no letters are out, they don't have solid connectivity in the area for public safety concerns. You've got Messenger Woods where there are people, pedestrians, you know, out in the woods, walking, camping, biking, doing, you know, engaging in recreational activities. There's no guarantee that they can get reliable 911 coverage in that area. One of the other factors that Mr. Chapman mentioned is, this is, the signal is a low-power signal. It's affected by almost everything. It's absorbed by trees. So foliage on trees, the trees absorb the signal. It's, as I said, sensitive to topography. It's also, it doesn't go through solid objects, so it's deflected by solid objects. So the farther away from that key point you move the antennas, the less effective they become, especially in this area where Messenger Woods is heavily wooded. So that's, I mean, that's the reason that it has to be where it is, and that's the reason, and the fact that there is not reliable service there does cause a public safety risk for people who may need emergency services in that area. So a couple of other things that were mentioned in the staff report. Visual impact, the, where the tower is sighted, it will be almost impossible to see it unless you are up on Chicago Bloomington Road, standing at the Comodite Rightway because it's clear cut, you've got a pretty good perspective, and you're up high. That's probably about the only place that you'll be able to see the tower because its height in relation to the trees and in relation to the top topography, you won't be able to see it from Parker Road just because the angle you'd have to look up at, all you're going to see is trees. Where it is on the property is completely screened by trees. So in terms of visual, visual impact, it's going to be, it's going to be difficult to see. I know there were some questions raised about, you know, maybe painting it or doing something to it to make it look different. I don't know if any of you remember, but back in the day when wireless first kind of started up in the Chicago area, Ameritech was one of the first companies, this has got to be late 80s, mid 80s, I would say, the first companies to start building, building towers. And because they were concerned about aesthetics, they decided to paint their towers kind of a light blue color, a parallel sky blue color. You can still see some of them around when you drive around, and they really kind of stick out because in Chicago, as we've learned, as we know, our skies are more gray, more often gray than they are blue. And so one, most wireless companies have figured out is that the normal galvanized finish, the galvanized little finish of the towers tends to be actually more invisible than if you painted a color because, you know, seasons change, sky conditions change, but we have a lot of gray, so the gray, the galvanized finish tends to be a better, a better fit for trying to eliminate the negative visual impact. Let's see. Oh, there was also some mention about impact on property values. I think the note in the staff report says property taxes. I actually, I trade, I'm a real estate appraiser, and in my practice, I have had the opportunity to do evaluation impact studies on towers in residential areas. And there's one particular, one particular tower that was very interesting, it was up in a north shore suburb of Wilmette. And it was built, and I don't know how this happened, but it was built in an existing established residential subdivision. And I was able to do a study where I compared the property value trends prior to the addition of the tower to the property value trends subsequent to the addition of the tower. And then I also compared that to a test subdivision of equally impacted properties but without the tower nearby. And they tracked almost identically in an upward trend. So it was, it was pretty good evidence to the, in terms of, you know, there being no negative value impact to the addition of a tower in a residential, residential area. And there was a question about, oh, RF emissions, yes, about RF emissions studies. As Mr. Chapman pointed out, Verizon's FCC license, their ability to do business is subject to the FCC. And the FCC, if Verizon is found to be out of compliance with FCC regulations, the FCC will take their license away and they are no longer allowed to be in the business of providing some insurance. If that is, if compliance with FCC regulations is a concern, Verizon would be happy to perform a RF emissions study on the tower. They can do a theoretical study, which is what they expect the emissions to be at ground level, once the tower is built. They can also do an actual post-construction study to confirm those results, and if that's something that the villages, the village would be interested in, I'm sure Verizon would be happy to provide those for them. So, I'm sure I missed something. Questions?
Okay, thank you very much. There may be questions from commissioners and you may wish to respond to some of the comments from the public.
Thank you.
I know we have several people signed to speak at this particular case. Thank you, BJ. One thing I can remind you of is that all of the comments that were made at prior public hearing are already carved the record. If you wish to reinforce that, if you feel the need to stress that, this is your time to do so. But in any case, I would appreciate if everyone would hold their comments for a total of five minutes so that we're not here all night. Okay, first assignment, Mr. Bob Cott. Cott?
Yeah. I have the property just to the south. And I, a little bit about this because I did it in military. Okay, you're saying line of sight, 150-foot tower, what about the Conno farm if they're worried about the property to the west? The Conno farm is a big farm, we shoot right over that area you're talking about. Property values, if they're so sure the property values are going to hold up, then why don't they give a certificate guaranteeing the difference between what someone would pay for a house and what we'll get for it? I mean, with the actual value. And Verizon's going to monitor themselves. I mean, for RF output? A heater, a hair dryer is resistant heat, and you only run it once in a while, you're not running it 24/7. My bedroom's face this thing, okay? It heats up the trees too. If you go on the internet, you'll see that it eventually decays trees. And I have a lot of 200, 150-year-old trees on my property. So what should I do? What should I do? Log my property off and put a mobile home park there? Now the place is going to be commercial? I mean, I've been out there 42 years. I mean, this will enhance somebody's value, but the rest of us, we're going to eat this thing. I just don't think it's fair. The, and there's also to the southeast, southwest, straight west, and straight east, the old farm that Ann Greason had, which is Galvez and Ariel, there's 500 acres there. I mean, I don't know why you're putting this thing around the bedroom community. It may be Zone A1, but it was done a long time ago to keep it rusting. There's wildlife, it's kind of, kind of a throwback in time. I mean, this is going to help one person, but it's going to hurt the rest of us. I guess, you know, based on what you said, and I don't want to go over five minutes and repeat what I already said to you guys, you know, but I just wonder how many of you would want this thing next door to them? I don't think many. Because if it's a line of sight, it's going to shoot right over that area anyway, 150-foot tower. I have AT&amp;T phone in my basement, deep basement, brick house. Nope, I can pick up that AT&amp;T phone and I can get a call anywhere, all the time, 20, never had a call dropped there. In Florida, different places I've had calls dropped, but never there. So if you're having trouble with Verizon, it's a maybe Verizon because there's other phones available. And my internet, my satellite works, my phone works, I don't see there's an issue there. And if there is, and it's west of there, the Conno farm would sit, would be a perfect location, shoots right over that area. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Tom Stevens?
Thank you. I've made some comments in an earlier meeting. I'd just like to reinforce the fact that I think it'd be an unfortunate impairment to the rural character of the neighborhood. It's a very nice wooded rural residential area, and we just don't want this industrial infrastructure to impair the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Vic Kiditis, most likely Tom. First name is Vic for sure. K-I-D. While we're considering that, we'll move on. Andrea Koiter? Andrea Koeter?
Hi, I'm Andrea Koeter, and I've been a resident for 46 years in Homer. I disagree with you, sir, because I have Verizon. I have no problem with my Verizon phone. When I was here last time, I had the old flip phone. My children decided to upgrade me to iPhone for Christmas. I haven't had a problem getting a phone call in or out. I have not dropped a phone call anywhere in the area, even between the curves and bends in the road. I have friends that live between Parker Road and Cedar Road. Guess what? My Verizon phone, I get them. So wherever that donut hole is, I guess my friends don't live in it. We have other options, too, I would think. How about the fire department over on Bell Road, South Bell Road? I've noticed Northwest Homer, at 355 and 143rd, they have a cell tower. On 151st and Whip Road, the fire department has a cell tower. Wouldn't it be better to look into a place like Messenger Woods, Konos? Konos may want something. They're right there by the donut hole. I also know, I think the fire department has property on Chicago Bloomington, close to the Cedar. If that's where the donut hole is, maybe they could do business with the fire department over there. Maybe it would be a good idea to look at other options. Maybe we're not a subdivision, but we are residential. Once you start letting commercial companies come in and take over our residential area, what is it going to do? If you look behind you, what does it say? Village Homero Glen, Community and Nature in Harmony. What's that going to do to our nature park? And we're not alone, just because we're sitting here. We're not alone. I'd like to present this to you. It's a petition, signed by about 30 some other residents that live around the area.
We have a copy of this, and it will be made a part of the record. Would you like to read it, or would you like me to read it?
You can read it. Mr. Cott wrote it up, and we got the neighbors around there to sign it. And not a one feel that one person has the right to destroy our residential nature area. It's not in character with our area. And I don't think anyone's sitting on the board, or anybody else would buy it next to them, or in their backyard. So, there it is, guys. We're not alone.
Okay, thank you. As I said before, this was submitted to our staff in the village. The petition, which is signed, not numbered, but it's about 25 to 40, signatures in that range, states, "This is a petition against the building of a cell tower on 17239 Parker Road. We object to this construction primarily because of the detrimental effects on property values, resale values, as well as the unsightly effects on the neighborhood, and questions about the health effects and environmental damage by caring neighbors signing." So that will, and already is part of the record. Next, we have David Emerson.
I happen to be the owner of the property that's in question. We were blessed to acquire this 10 acres over 30 years ago. We, we love our piece of property, and the biggest thing about it is the trees. And the only thing I'd like to point out is that the Commonwealth Edison lines that have been behind there in that corridor for over 30 years, because when we bought our property, we happened to notice that they were there. It didn't seem to affect our, our, the decision to buy. And in the 30 years plus that we've been here, over 11,000 days, if I make mental note of two to three, 400 times of seeing the towers, that would be a lot. Thank you for your mind.
Thank you. Next, it looks like it might be Sid Mueller. First name was?
Pat.
Pat, I'm sorry.
Sure, Patricia. I agree with what Deanna and Bob had to say about the cell tower being in a residential community, that, you know, I think that there could have been other choices that perhaps could have been made to facilitate Verizon's property with the carrier, and its being able to, you know, be used by cellular customers. I have cell phones, just like Bob does, and I live in a stonehouse, and I have no problems with my cellphone carrier at all. If people want Verizon, then maybe they should think about going to another carrier. That donut hole you're talking about is really the forest preserve. You've got the forest preserve, Messenger Woods on one side, and the other two sides of Parker Road. So there's not a lot of, the, the trees are an impediment, obviously, for the transmission of the signal. Although, I am a real estate broker, and I'm in that area constantly, and I'm constantly getting calls. I don't lose any communication, my cellphone is not dropping calls, so I think that probably it might have something to do with Verizon. And, you know, I think what Bob said about going to look at the Konos Farm, which is a massive farm, would not be a bad idea. But you're thinking of putting a cell tower, which no matter what you say, the FCC made fit in 1996, I think it was, to rewrite their laws stating that you could not use health issues as a reason for denying it. There are RF radiation signals that are being given off. And one day, we are all going to be awakened to the fact that some of these radiation, magnetic field, whatever you call them, are affecting our health, and especially our children. So I think that there's a great concern over health, but we can't deny it on that. But I am a real estate broker, I sell real estate in this area, and if somebody tells you that it doesn't devalue your property, let me tell you, I'm out in the field, I'm selling every day, it does devalue your property. And to think that that tower is going to be in the middle of our forest, which can also, which I delivered this afternoon to Vijay, a thing that talked about, towers can collapse and catch fire. We have a national wonderful opportunity to preserve our woods and not have some calamity that could happen and could destroy and wipe out the, the woods. It, it reminds me of, well, it can't happen. Well, yeah, that's, that's what they said when they put these oil pipelines through, and then all of a sudden they sprung a leak, and they contaminated water and did everything else. Well, how would we like it in our neighborhood, which our community logo is Community and Nature in Harmony, that this tower collapses, catches fire, and puts our, our woods up on flame? I don't think anybody would be real happy about that. I just think the board needs to consider that this is a residential community, it's a unique community, the dead cell is really encompassed by most of what is the forest preserve, because there are really not a lot of subdivisions around. And property values are devalued. I don't care what appraisal you're using. If I took somebody and I showed him a property that was near the high tension wires or by a cell tower, you know, you yourself, would you pay less for that house, or would you pay what the going market rate was? You can answer that question pretty easily. So I'm in agreement with all of these people. If it's, Verizon needs a site, let them find a different site, not in our residential community. Keep it pristine.
Okay, next to the comments. We have one that wasn't responded to. Is there anyone still wishing to speak from public comment? Okay, were you sworn in?
No, I didn't sign in.
Were you sworn in?
On.
That would be necessary. Would you like to? Afterwards, please state your name and address for the record.
All right, raise your right hand and say adieu after the following. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Good evening. My name's Lynn Richardson. I live at 17563 South Meter Road in Homer Glen, Illinois. And this is the first meeting that I attended for this idea of the cell tower. And, and the understanding that the main proposed site there off of Parker Road, and then I heard that there's a second proposed site on Chicago Bloomington. Is that correct, where the firehouse is supposed to be? On Chicago Bloomington there?
It's been a suggested site, but not a proposed site.
Okay, okay. Well, I live in that area, and if, as I sat here tonight and compared both of the locations, not that it is going to go in on Chi Bloom. Personally, I feel the one off of Parker is better than the one on Chi Bloom, because the one on Chi Bloom there is way out in the open, and I feel that a lot more residents there will be able to see the tower than the residents on Parker. I know we could, there's only so much progress you can stop and adjust and hope things go through and hope things don't go through, but I just want to say I hope for the best. And I've seen Homer Glen change a lot in the years, so I hope, I would rather see it in a spot. Again, the utility lines are there, I think it's a little bit more appropriate myself, personally. But that's my view, and I hope it all works out. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for the comments. At this time, my commotion to close the public hearing. Commissioner Crament, second.
I'll second.
Commissioner McGary, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Glen Commissioners, your turn. Questions, comments?
I'm wondering if they considered Connel Farm, approached them, would it, is it as compatible?
Connel Farm is just to the west. It's a mile and a half west. It's a big, it's a semi-circuvery, you know, that these, has a pump, a pump in there on Cedar Road, that type of thing.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not familiar with.
Connel Farm?
Connel Farm, yes. But if, if, what I'm hearing, if it's at Cedar Road, again, remembering the, you know, where this coverage hole is, and the fact that we're talking about maybe a quarter mile, a quarter mile radius, going a mile and a half, a mile and a quarter away from this location is not going to, not going to cover that area.
If you look at that map up there, see that blank area there to the left of Parker, of, of Parker Road? That's where the farm is. It goes right into the woods there. See on the left-hand side of the street, about a third of the way down? That's the Connel Farm.
Ground's higher.
Ground's higher, sure, there's a big hill set up there.
Well, and see, and that poses the same problem that we were, that I was discussing earlier. If you're at a higher elevation, that directional beam is going to go right over the valley, it's not going to get down into that location.
You're going to have short results.
Same, you have the same result.
Could you elaborate on this thing with Commonwealth Edison that you can't? We have an agreement with them, or Verizon does, but not here. But nobody's really given more than a passing why not?
Well, no, actually, it was more than a passing why not. We actually went to the, I was actually the first choice to try to resolve the, the coverage issue here. We, we brought a team out, we investigated the site, we prepared drawings, we submitted them to Comet, and Comet rejected, Comet would not lease space on the tower.
They consider, they consider it a critical line.
It's, it's serving a critical customer. They're, well, you know, in Homer Glen, you know, you've got, you've got Comet transmission lines crossing the community, going, there's several of them. And Comet prioritizes where those lines are going to and where they're coming from. For example, if they're, if it's a direct feed from a nuclear power station, they won't lease space on it because of, because of homeland security concerns. If it's, if the site is serving certain particular customers, they have a, they have a line up on the north shore that services Blending Naval Air Station and Abbott Labs, they, they won't lease towers on those circuits because of the customers that the towers are serving. So this happens to be a critical line, and they, it's just off limits, you know.
If I'm not mistaken, at the last meeting that this was discussed, wasn't part of the request that the proof come from a letter, either in the form of the correspondence between Verizon and Commonwealth Edison to say, "We have acquired," and then to demonstrate the response that Comet gave, that they said no?
Sure, we, we have it.
We've got.
I think I forwarded to Vijay the email, I believe.
We don't, we never got it, as far as.
We never got it.
That was given before the last public hearing, that was way back in December. So those emails from Comet were refined, the contact with Comet, and then, you know.
We got an email, Vijay, correct me if I'm wrong, other commissioner, but we got an email that said, "Yes, they had reached out. They had answered your question, did you reach out? Yes, we reached out." That's all we received.
Yeah, we did not receive any actual correspondence.
Any concrete correspondence that said, a letter from Verizon saying, "Dear Comet" or whoever, and then a response back. We never saw anything like that. If that's out there, we've not seen it. Question?
I mean, do you have another? I have a question similar to that, on top of, on top of, in regards to the.
I had a couple of them. Go ahead, go ahead. Ask the related question.
Because in our, one of the, one of the items in our zoning code, you know, we talk about this specifically in the application review process, about the efforts made by the applicant to investigate alternate sites. And we've all been talking about, we think that everyone here, residents, people on the planning commission have brought it up, that there might be alternate sites that are not directly in a residential area, okay, that might be more preferable. I questioned it myself, and I referenced a state statute with hierarchies for choosing sites. That hierarchy, I, I've come to find out, only applies in areas that are not municipalities, and it applies to more township areas. But it's a good standard to follow, is a rule of thumb and a best practice. And one of the things that we had asked when you all came back here was to show us what other sites you've evaluated. We still are not seeing that at this point. And when I say that, what I mean is specifically, we went to five commercial sites. These are, this is what we asked. Here is our proof of, and here is our responses. We sent correspondence, we made phone calls, documentation. We went to other agricultural sites within the area. Here's what we offered, here were the responses that we got. We've seen none of that. We've seen none of that. The Forest Preserve District is directly across the street and behind. We've not seen anything that you all have even reached out to them. That's the area where the worst coverage is. We haven't even talked about that. Has there been any correspondence with your companies to and from with the agricultural district regarding placing the tower on that site? Those are the kind of concrete things that we're looking for.
Well, I know that we have, Bill Schrader prosecuted the search ring, and he, I know for a fact that he did contact a dozen, a dozen or so property owners where, now, let me back up one step. First of all, the, you referenced the state statute. The state statute, if you were. The state statute, if you were to apply the state statute in this, in this situation, the state statute grants permitted use to agricultural zoning. So under the state statute, you could build a 250-foot tower with no setbacks and by right. So the state statute allows that in that zoning district.
I understand that. But in this case, let's look at the village zoning map. Look at what's all around it. And what other people are bringing up is there's other agricultural parcels within this area that are much more preferential because there isn't residential direct access to it. And that's the point that we're making.
Well, so I know that, I know as I was, as I was saying, that Bill did, when he prosecuted the search ring, he did contact, I mean, our preference would be to stay out of Homer Glen, frankly. Our preference would be to stay in Will County because the state statute dictates what, what we can do. And it's more flexible than municipal zoning. So the, the area south of the search ring near Chicago Bloomington Road, I know that Bill did reach out to all the property owners and garnered no interest. So in terms of the forest preserve, we've tried to get sites in forest preserves in every county, Will County, Kirk County, DuPage County. They do not lease space for communications infrastructure of any sort in, within forest preserves. So we could, there, there was a map prepared that showed where, you know, where the door to Bill and the hot dog. He sent out letters, he sent out certified letters, he knocked on doors. He reached out to, to all, all the property owners that were within proximity of the, the search ring and got no response or declined interest. So we could provide that too, if you'd like.
Excuse me, so what you're saying, there was only one person willing to sell out the neighbors?
And that's the point I was going to make, that's a, that's a great question. No, there's, there's, well, taking the motion out of the question. The, the, the property was chosen because it was one of the few parcels that had the advantage of being large in size, where the tower could meet the village setback requirements, proper zoning, proper screening. You know, some mention has been made about the residential character of the neighborhood. The proposed tower is only, I think, about 300 feet from the ComEd transmission towers. And so if you want to talk about an industrial use, the, you know, the big, you know, heavy buzzing ComEd towers is certainly an industrial use. And this tower would be proximate to it and certainly no more intrusive than, than the ComEd towers. But when you start mining into a, a search ring and start looking for properties, you know, the first thing, like I said, the first thing we're going to look for are colocation opportunities, you know, something that we could use that's already there. The second thing we're going to look for is, is zoning, and where is the most favorable zoning that we can find? Typically, that's going to be unincorporated zoning that's covered by the state statute, by the ILCS. Barring that, then we start looking at the usable sites, and then we dig into the Usable Zoning Code that pertains to communication structures and start, start trying to figure out, you know, aren't there any parcels that will work? And most of them are eliminated due to size because of the tower setback requirements. Once we find a parcel that's big enough that we think we can find a spot on the parcel where the, where the tower will meet the setback requirements, then we start looking at the other parts of the code. You know, can, do we think we can, do we think that this is an arguable location? And then we have to go to the property owner and see if they're interested. So there are a lot of places where these, you know, potential candidates fall out. You know, this just happened to be a situation where we had a willing property owner, we had a property that was sufficient size to meet the setback requirements, and we had, we had, you know, zoning that, that was allowed to be consideration.
So let me ask the question again, has every avenue?
Public comment right now is closed. We'll give the opportunity to speak at a later time if it's necessary.
Has every avenue been explored for other properties available? And do you have proof of the interest letter? The letter of denial by the landowner? The investigative piece that you've done to ensure that these avenues have been explored?
Before there's an answer to that, I'd like to ask our legal counsel. What is the legal requirement on part of the petitioner in that regard?
Well, I think, I think the legal requirement on, on part of the petitioner is to, is to explore what opportunities are available that meet their criteria, you know, meet, meet the criteria of, of being able to fill in the gap in, you know, providing customer service. I don't know that they need to knock on each and every door in particular. I mean, I think that they need to use reasonable efforts to find another property within the area. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you've had experience under those circumstances or not.
Yeah, occasionally. It depends on the wording of the zoning ordinance of the community that is in question. But if the zoning ordinance requires, as a matter of process, for the petitioner to seek out more than one site for evaluation, then that petitioner should at least indicate back to the planning or community development department or zoning board what their process was, what the outcome of each inquiry was, and what their conclusion came to be based on their investigation.
So what, what our zoning ordinance here says is, one of the criteria is, and I'll read it. It says, "The efforts made by the applicant to investigate alternative, alternative sites for the tower that would reduce the impact on the surrounding area." So I think, you know, I don't, I don't count that they need to knock on every door in Homer Glen to see if it works, but they, I think that you would always read, read a reasonable requirement into there. And then they should report, as Mr. Chairman said, what those are, which Mr. Lane's doing. I don't know if he has all the information, but it's, well, for whether it's enough information to satisfy you, is what I'm trying to say.
Sure. Can, can Bill answer your question?
Don't forget, don't forget, you have to investigate each piece of property. You've got to lie in play.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thanks again for letting me come up and take this opportunity to let you know. In the very beginning stages of our site development look, investigation around the property, I dug into the area, sort of understood where the Homer Glen area was and where Will County was. And seeing how it was such a large, a ring area, I took a look and focused in toward the southwest area. And I went to the nursery. We've got letters that I sent out to several or so different owners, trustees, farmland. I went out twice, talked to the folks that were mowing the grass next to the Homer Glen fire, fire district property, observed that, reached out to those folks, looked at all the larger areas, almost that entire southwest area. Really did a very complete look. I drove out there a couple different times on parcels that looked like they may have the, you know, the setback requirements and the size of the property that would work. Left, you know, some, some materials for them. And in, in all those efforts, for those two weeks of effort that we scrubbed, we looked, spoke with the nursery, some of the folks on the phone. The letters that we sent out, no response to come back. And tried across the road too, on the upper side. There were a couple different properties up there which looked like they would be suitable for, for a tower set. And spoke with the gentleman, I can't remember his name, because it was two years ago, over on the other side, and they were not interested. And then, of course, with the, with the ComEd lines being, being where they were, and colocation being, you know, a very important part of the whole search process, that's when we decided to investigate and see just how interested in whether or not we could get something going on those, on those, those lines. So it's a very large ring, it was a very large area. And my focus was, was to, again, like Mark said, find the parcels that were zoned properly, that would set the setback, that would be compatible with the community, keep everyone in, in mind. I could not, in the time that I had, contact every single solitary property owner. But in the process, we find to those that would be the very best candidate for this particular installation to solve this, this, this hole that we have in, in gap in this area. We do have copies of the letters that we can provide. And we can put a map to show where I left information for those property owners. And you'll see that pretty much of that entire southwest area of that, of the search ring, of that area was, was taken care of.
At this point, VJ, I think I'd like to have you address that, and maybe it's putting you on the spot. The plan commission may have their own ideas of what the requirements are, but I'd like to know on the record if the applicant is satisfied the staff's requirement for the documentation of the search?
Yeah, as far as the search, I have a letter from ComEd actually denying permission to their lines. Someone passed this around. That's the letter I referred to back in December. So based on their testimony, and I think it's up to the planning commission to determine whether they made reasonable search. Apparently, they did search for two, two weeks, reached out to the property owners. I think if you think there's, they missed certain elements, like a resident or forest preserve, I think it's appropriate to direct them to that specific type of entity or resident. I think that's probably where we are right now. If you think they missed certain things in the search ring, could it be the forest preserve, ComEd, you know, light farm? I think that's probably where we are right now.
Okay, well, one of the things I'd like to comment on is that not just in cell tower cases, but in other cases, we have accepted a sworn testimony of the applicant unless we have reason to disbelieve. And if the staff is satisfied, then I think we can put that to rest. We may feel there's a need to see the written evidence, but personally, I think that would be going way beyond anything the plan commission has ever done in the past.
Part of our job is, a lot of our job is to protect the community around it. The people around it don't want it. Have you gone back to the office and said, "Hey, the people around here don't want this. Where else can we go?"
This all, that all kind of goes back to, to the engineering and the need for, to fill the coverage gap. The coverage gap is where it is. Yeah, if we had a choice to, to put up a tower in an industrial park someplace that would, that would cover the area, that'd be great. But the coverage gap, the coverage hole is where it is. So you have to bring the service to the coverage hole. Unfortunately, the, the, the place that best addresses the, the need is, is the spot that we're proposing to put it.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to a, to a cell tower. My father was a fireman for 30 years, and, you know, the fire department needs cell coverage. You're, you make a comment that, you know, you originally looked at Will County, you look at townships prior to looking at villages because it's, it's, it's a little bit probably easier for you if you can find something in the county or, or township. The fire department district, the Chicago Bloomington area, that, that is township, correct, VJ?
Correct.
Okay. I think that this property needs to have a new look and, and some consideration here. You know, we discussed egress and degress. You know, we need to be able to get in and out of this cell tower site. A fire department is nothing but egress and degress. That's what fire departments do. This particular property was purchased years ago by the Homer Fire District. And according to what I have heard from the fire chief, that he has been willing to work with you guys on finding a piece of parcel on that property to utilize. Now, there's been talk that this particular site is in a flood zone. After talking with Chief Lucatius, you know, he, he assured me that the fire department would never purchase a piece of property that would be in a flood zone for future use. So that would probably negate any argument that this is a flooding issue here. I think that these cell towers need to be in a, you know, an industrial or commercial property or a public property rather than in a, an agricultural property that, that has so many residents nearby. Those are my comments.
I guess the question I have, I'm not sure we've concluded. We haven't discussed that property today. It's been a subject of discussion before. Does it meet the technical requirements of the coverage necessary for the area in question? It's located on Cedar Road, again, south of the proposed property, I guess on Bloom, Chicago Bloomington, or Bruce Road, one of the two, they split there.
Chicago Bloomington.
And so it's a considerable distance. So the question is, would it meet the technical requirements if everything else were to work?
Well, I would say that it's highly unlikely. It, I, I did measure it. It's about a mile and a quarter, mile and a third from the, from the proposed location, which is quite a distance when you're talking about RF signal. The other, the other issue is the, well, and I know there, there's a, there's a map in the packet that showed that there is floodplain on the property. Verizon is very sensitive to, well, the FCC makes Verizon very sensitive to, to building in floodplains, floodways, wetlands, environmentally sensitive or impacted areas. They have a lot of preemptions that are placed upon them in terms of being able to put, to put towers on parcels so impacted. The other, though, the other thing I noticed is that the fire department parcel, the ground elevation is 668 feet. The, the intersection at Parker, Chicago Bloomington Road is 736 feet. So you've got a site down here trying to reach up over a hill and then go back down into, into a lower elevation. I, I suspect that if you look at a propagation map of a tower and a parcel, it'll stop at the high elevation. You still won't get into that, into that area where we're, where we're trying to, to resolve the coverage issue.
Eileen, you said you had further questions?
Yes, I do have a question. I have two questions, really. Number one, if there's, what were those measurements that you just gave a minute ago? There was a 65-foot variance between the 700-foot elevation and the other property?
In terms of the fire department property?
Yep.
Sorry, the fire department, fire, excuse me. The fire department property was at an elevation of 668 feet.
Okay, versus 700 at the high end?
No, at the high end, so the, the intersection of Parker Road and Chicago Bloomington Road is 736 feet.
Okay, so your proposed tower is 150 feet.
But it, and it's down, it's down at 700.
What's the maximum height that the tower can go to?
That's his only question, 150.
Oh, 150.
150 feet.
What's the elevation of the proposed site?
700.
The fire department's property is 668. The proposed site is 700. So we're looking at a... Right.
32 foot.
Right.
And the elevation between the two properties rises to what?
736.
Is that significant?
Typically, to topographical changes like that are significant. I know when RF asks us to submit a skip package or a candidate package on a proposed location, they ask us to submit a topographical map because they use that in their predictions as to whether the site will be effective or not.
Kevin?
I have one more.
One more, okay.
The other question I have is, why, if we're giving so much consideration to this area and the alleged black hole, why is the coverage information considered proprietary? Verizon will not share the information of the areas that are actually covered to the fullest extent of Verizon's current, or AT&amp;T's, their current ability right now? Why is it proprietary?
The map shows you, if you want to jump ahead to the coverage maps, next one. Okay, so that map shows you the
It doesn't, the yellow block, it doesn't show us that the southwest section of this area is the most impacted or the northwest section is the least impacted, even though they're all in this alleged black hole?
Well, if you want to, if you see the yellow spray in the middle of the area, that's the most impacted area. And then as you move out from the center of that yellow block into the light green, that's the next most impacted. And then the dark green, it's getting better as you move out from the center of that area. So Verizon is providing you the coverage details. The only thing that they're not providing is the map. Because that's, the math part is what they're considering proprietary that they don't want to be sharing with their competitors.
But with this information here that you're providing to this commission to make an educated decision on a request that you have, isn't this providing the same information? Or is there information that should be disclosed to this committee that is considered proprietary?
I don't think that knowing the, and maybe Mr. Chapman, Chapman can speak to that, but I don't think knowing that the numbers behind the prediction would make any difference to your decision.
Let me respond to that. The reason that I recommended that number decibel levels be provided was to determine quantitatively, or at least get an idea quantitatively, of what constitutes reliable versus unreliable coverage on street, which is the basic level of coverage. It's the person walking down the sidewalk or, you know, hanging out in the park or whatever. Basic level of outdoor coverage. When you go inside, coverage has to be stronger, be it inside of a vehicle or inside of a building. Coverage has, it must be stronger the further you get inside of a structure. Numbers would have been helpful in understanding what level of signal is the boundary between reliable and unreliable. Now, what Mr. Lane explained to me in an email this morning was that carriers are basically using those types of numbers when they can get their hands on them from other carriers to beat each other up. T-Mobile saying, our signal's better than AT&amp;T's. Or Verizon would say, our signal's better than T-Mobile. That sort of thing. It becomes an advertising war and subscriber or potential subscribers become caught in the middle. And they were trying to avoid that in this case.
Okay, Kevin, anything?
I know it was one of our tougher cases because nobody wants it by the house, but in regards to, I wish we could have gotten better answers with the fire department property. That's my big thing. But I know, I've mentioned before with the concerns of public safety, even though a cell phone might get good coverage or it might be a landowner phone, most fire departments, police departments are going to computer aided dispatch. So the entire car is full of laptops and everything else. So it's, there's more reliance on the signal. With Verizon covering 70% of first responders, it is a concern. I like the fact that they mentioned RF emission studies. I know that's one of the concerns with a lot of the neighbors to know what's this thing kicking out and exposing us to. So if Verizon was willing to do that. And I also understand nobody wants it next to their house. You can probably go up and down a park a hundred times. And if it's in a tight cluster of trees, you're not going to see it as opposed if it's in the middle of an open field on a farm.
Let me interrupt because Lynn mentioned that you brought up that subject that our legal counsel, as far as I can understand, has already indicated to us that we are not able to deny the petition based on the residents don't like it or we don't like it. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, there has to be evidence in the record that supports the denial based upon your ordinance and based upon federal laws. I mean, well, the reason they may not like it is because it could be located better somewhere else.
Sure.
May not reach it, you know? I mean, just because they don't like it doesn't mean you have to prove it.
Right.
Right? But we have to, you know, the evidence is presented.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, so.
Right, and like I said, the one with them won't do the RF emission study before, during, and after. That could help with some of the concerns, not only for this tower, but potentially future towers that we have. That might be a good idea for someone, for us to put into bill of ordinance to address neighbors' concerns of how much energy are these things kicking out? How are ours?
We'll leave that to the legal team and the staff to determine what is possible and what's not. Okay, did you have more, Lynn?
I'm sorry to ask another question. Can we use the microphone, I think? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to ask another question. I'd like to reference the letter that was sent to the committee members dated March 30th, 2018. It's from a Ms. Patricia Mueller. And it's referencing the devaluation of property and the HUD requirements and the categorization of cell towers with hazards and nuisances. And it references mostly the financial effects that a cell tower in a residential area, surrounded by a residential area, would have on the sale and resale and purchase of property. And the consideration, we have considered a lot less a financial hardship in cases that we have looked at before. Putting something like this in the center of a residential area, I think, does create some sort of a financial hardship as it directly relates to the ability of the residents to be able to buy or sell a property that keeps it within the, what their peer properties are being sold for. I think that this is also a consideration that we need to keep in the back of our minds.
Again, I'm glad we've got legal advice here. Is that something that we can legally take under consideration?
Excuse me, for a special use permit, you know, the diminution of value of other properties is always something that you can consider. You know, and if you're convinced by the evidence that it will diminish. You've got one person saying it will, one person saying it won't. So it's up to you to judge that evidence in a way appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn?
So there does, there have to be evidence of the property value going down? Or is that evidence in my mind?
Well, no, it can't be evidence in your mind. I mean, it can't be based just upon sort of gut feeling. It has to be based upon, you know, some sort of, some sort of evidence that it's going to be devalued. You know, I haven't, I don't know that I've seen the letter before. Is it the same cabinet's book earlier? Maybe, maybe not. But, look, you guys have to judge the evidence. I can't judge it for you. Mr. Lane testified that he's a real estate appraiser and he's had experience and he's done studies in other areas and found that it didn't impact the property values, so.
And there's reference to the studies there?
Yeah, I mean, this is, look, you have to have evidence before the committee. You can't have just, you know, sort of a, somebody citing something from the given, from the internet, you know, that there's going to be diminution of property values. What you consider is the evidence that you hear before you tonight. You know, that's really what it is that we're supposed to consider. You may be convinced that it is diminished. And that's your decision to make. I can't make that for you. But I can tell you that the court's going to look at, you know, what basis that the village had for making the determination.
If I may underscore that with just one point. One thing I do try and follow in my consultancy is case law concerning denials of cell sites. And the courts of various federal health districts have underscored the need for documented evidence as opposed to mere opinion. There has to be evidence based on study, survey, some kind of quantitative evidence, some kind of quantitative analysis why the assertion is being made that property values are either affected or unaffected or that any other criteria that's being used to question the ordinance that allows for the cell site or the potential impact of the cell site, that has to be documented. There has to be some kind of underlying statistical or factual evidence to support it. There is case law in Illinois, Thorndorpe versus Village of North Barrington, that was decided in 2001, that sets out various criteria concerning the treatment of property values when considered within the bounds of the zoning gardens. These sorts of things are, the courts are requiring more and more specificity over time.
There's also a case, C. Calcorp versus Zorn Ward appealed to the city of Redlandsville. It's one of the few state cases that address this. Basically, the appellate court in the fifth judicial district said, characterizing the testimony by local jactors, was that the testimony merely expressed generalized concern about safety decreasing property values in the state. Such testimony does not amount to substantial evidence required by 704A. So, I mean, you know, look, I can't weigh this for you. Stu can't weigh this for you. You have to weigh it. I mean, you have to, you have to realize, you have to determine in your mind whether there is good evidence and not just somebody's gut reaction or some, you know, study that can't be substantiated here. I mean, you know, the commission, you guys probably heard enough of this. I mean, you could hire a real estate appraiser to go out and make a study or something, you know?
I understand what you're saying. They presented their case and they brought some evidence of not, no impact on property values. So now is it incumbent upon the village of Homer Glen to go do this research themselves to see if there really is?
Well.
I mean, there's no defendant and plaintiff here.
Well, you, I mean, you have, you have a lot of people here who are, you know, not in favor of the project. I mean, you know, evidence could have been presented before you. You know, does the village want to hire an appraiser? I don't know about an appraiser to do a study. I can't answer that question. I don't know if they would do that or not. But, you know, I can just tell you what the case law says and I can tell you, you know, that your ordinance tells you to weigh any diminutive value. But it can't be speculation. It has to be based upon some sort of evidence.
I've only been on the commission for maybe four years, maybe three and a half, four years, something like that. I don't remember, Don, you've been on the commission longer. Have we ever, under your tenure, when you've been here, have we ever allowed a cell tower on a residential or ag property that was directly, like an ag property that was directly, would affect residents?
Not to my recollection.
I don't recall ever doing that either, prior to...
However, I have to qualify that. Again, the property is zoned to allow for a special permit. We have not had a request. One that was denied was to go on a commercial property in the vicinity of Golden Open 143rd. And it was literally less than 100 feet away from the house. Not the property, but the house. And of course, there were surrounding neighborhoods around. And that one was denied on the basis of proximity. And ultimately, it went a different direction.
So it was denied on proximity, but it was only 100 or so feet?
Literally.
So Vijay, number three, the applicant was asked to provide evidence that special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of adjacent property nor substantially diminished or impair property values in the neighborhood. This is what they brought to us?
That's correct.
This is not your opinion?
That's correct.
Lynn, do you want to go back over that? Show me that again?
Well, here.
Yeah, can you show me where the reason is?
This is how we're supposed to decide.
The italics is the stamp. Is that right?
This is how we're supposed to decide.
Those are the stamps.
Those are, the italics, I think, Vijay, correctly or wrong, are your suggested findings and facts.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right. So, what are you looking at? You're looking at your staff report.
Eight of ten. Yeah, this is how we're supposed to decide.
It's included in every case. Doesn't suppose to read.
Can you read it again, of course, please?
The applicant was asked to provide evidence that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of adjacent properties nor substantially diminished and impaired property values in the neighborhood. So, but the applicant was asked to provide that evidence.
Well, Mr. Lane, if you recall, testified that he's a real estate appraiser. I'm not, I'm trying to make the case. I'm trying to point out what the testimony you have before you is that he's a real estate appraiser and he's got studies of this thing and he doesn't believe, in his mind, that it diminishes the value. I mean, that's the, you know, that's sort of the evidence that you look for in that application.
We're done with the other round start from there, Brian.
Yeah, my only concern, Colin, was the floodplain. And if it's, if it's too low to be used if the fire district property was outside of the range and that's already been dismissed as a property to be used, then I think that was my only question.
Okay, thank you. Brock, anything further?
No?
Beth?
No, no other questions.
Okay, then I think we're at a point. Finally, I'll ask the commissioners, as difficult as it may be, because there is a lot of emotion connected with this, to try to, as best as we can, erase anything and go by the factual evidence that's been presented and make a determination. And with that, I'll ask Candace to call a motion.
Sir, is there, I guess, I guess...
Oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion.
I think you would, could I make a suggestion, sir? You would probably need a motion to recommend approval of the application to the village board and adopt the findings and facts, so forth in the, in the staff report. He said typically how you would do it. Or you would make a motion to deny it. And it would probably be helpful if the motion is still denied based on reasons why you're recommending it.
And also, there's some staff, the district conditions on beach by over the porch. So you want to record that when you make the motion?
I have a question about the...
I, I have a question about the, on the conditions of approvals recommended. The first one talks about the, the effect of radiating power that Verizon anticipates. One of the things that the plan commissioners brought up was that Verizon offered was pre and post construction level measurements.
Our condition study.
Right. So could we add to that, could it be added to that first one, pre slash post-construction to clarify that?
I, I think that the applicant has agreed to that.
Right. So, but, because there was staff recommending the conditions, could that be added to the conditions wording? It could?
Do you wish to make a motion?
Pre and post, pre and post-construction. Those are the words you want added?
That's just what I was asking, because that was what was brought by Verizon.
One, I think he characterized as a theoretical study, so it's basically a projection, you can think of what it will be.
Right.
And then, and then they would follow up after the towers.
Right, and Kevin mentioned it in his comments as well.
Right.
So.
Okay, and I'd like to, to ask for a motion, because it's getting a little worrisome already, but it's been good discussions and I hope we're at a point of making an effective judgment. So with that, would someone make a motion? We're in the practice of either motioning to accept or deny. We will need a motion.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Which one?
I'm going to read it.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I move to adopt the findings, staff's findings, as the findings of the plant commission, and to recommend approval with the following conditions of a wireless communications facility, WCF 150 feet in height, in the A1 agricultural district, article H of provisions of chapter 220 of the code of village of Homer Glen, for 17239 South Parker Road, Homer Glen, Illinois, with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant should verify the effective radiated power that Verizon anticipates from the subject property would be substantially beneath the level that triggers FCC regulations both pre and post-construction. Number two, the applicant should substantiate the accuracy of the propagation maps by providing the decimal levels that determines whether the cell towers would provide reliable or unreliable in residence, in vehicle, and on-street coverage. Number three, except as otherwise required or permitted by the FCC, the proposed WCF will only have the name of the owner or operator of the WCF, its address, and emergency contact information not exceeding four square feet. Number four, a tree survey and preservation plan would be required prior to the village board consideration if the applicant proposes to disturb any significant or protected trees. The leased area shall be fully screened. Number five, the applicant should use neutral colors such as light gray, bringer tan, to make the monopole less prominent.
Thank you. In a second.
I'll second.
Can I ask just one question? Was the decimals what you considered proprietary?
Yes, circles.
And so that, that puts us into a bit of a problem. I don't know if you, if you guys ever provided those, like to Mr. Chapman, based upon a claim of proprietary information and a confidentiality agreement or something like that. Otherwise, otherwise, we're going, I don't want to get into a situation where, if this is approved, you know, where they, for some reason, cannot corporately comply with, with going, with, with the recommendation, then we're.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that up. That's a good point. I, I don't know the answer to that question. I know that Verizon won't even release that information to us as their consultant, so there could be a corporate, corporate reason that they would not be able to comply. Could you possibly reword the motion to say, if, if possible, or if?
I'll play my suggestion on that. We've had these kinds of things before. We could remove that section and make it part of the record, that the company agrees to work and comply with that as much as practical or possible.
I, I think.
Would the exemptions and release of information under FOIA help to ameliorate the situation?
Right, it wouldn't be, at least in my estimation, I mean, Freedom of Information Act, it wouldn't be disclosable because it's claimed, you know, as proprietary. In some cases, we have dealt. It, it just, we, we deal with this a lot, and I'm not surprised if they claim it as proprietary, but it would not be released under FOIA because of the claim of proprietary and the confidentiality agreement. But, you know, maybe, Stuart, I, maybe I put you on the spot, but, I mean, could, maybe the motion could be reworded, is that they, they provide before it goes to the village board some sort of comfort level to Mr. Chapman that their maps are accurate?
Yeah, I would have no, no problem with that, as long as it was in some way backed up by some measure of qualification.
Decimals or qualification.
One of the commissioners, Kevin, suggested this is wording. I'm not sure if that would be applicable.
Yeah, providing the, the decimals as provided, as provided by law. Law doesn't really impact on this at all, so it's a, it's a corporate secrecy issue.
Yeah, confidentiality is an issue to Verizon. If they're interested in doing this through a confidentiality agreement between MSA and your inside anchor Verizon, I'd certainly be open to considering that.
Do you think that will do that?
We could certainly, we could certainly ask.
Okay. Well, and I guess, and I guess, I mean, this is your recommendation, obviously. If, if you assume it passes with that recommendation, when it gets to the village board, they can always reevaluate that, too, and, you know, see if, what, what, anyway we've been able to make in terms of getting the decimals and getting, at least Mr. Chapman comfortable that he can give the village, you know, a recommendation, one way or the other.
How about if we just insert the word in, providing the reasonable degree of decimal levels? Or reasonable information regarding decimal levels, leaving it purposely vague?
This whole map is based on the, the true data, and so if we're going, we're asking for a level beyond, I believe, what we already see as evidence. So, I mean, if they're being false on this, they're being false on everything. So I think, you know, we can just strike two altogether.
So your suggestion would be to eliminate the?
Yeah, I don't think we need, I don't think we need that condition.
I tend to agree with that, but that's not you.
Yeah, would you all, do I need to read the entire motion again?
Probably not. Candace has it all recorded. Just scratch item number two.
And I did read everything else at full.
Right, so we do have a motion?
Yes, and Lynn was seconding it, but should she wait and do that after the amendment?
Well, so you've accepted the amendment. You made the amendment, do you second it?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner McGarry. Okay. Time to call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner McGarry? Yes. Commissioner Burden?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cozen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bagham?
Bagham, yes.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Chairman McGarry?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'd like to just call a five-minute, no longer than five-minute.
One thing, this thing was turned down twice before. For the same reasons, we're complaining, twice. Thank you, guys.
This is going to the village board on page 25.
Okay, we're ready for the next case. Next case is number HG 1809 EVA, O'Malley Builders. And I thank everyone for their patience. BJ, would you present this case, please?
Yes. Yep. So, the applicant is requesting for a plot of subdivision, a map amendment, or rezoning from A2 residential to R3A single-family, and a site plan approval with certain variances. And just for, just for your information, the name of the subdivision to Duke subdivision. The applicant presented a concept plan at a workshop meeting on February 1st, and we had initial public hearing on March 15th. And at the public hearing on March 15th, the plant commission directed the applicant to revise the streetscape plan, dedicating a landscape strip behind existing homes in the principal core subdivision, and relocate the sidewalks on the, to the west side of the proposed street. So tonight, they're coming back with those specific site changes to explain to the plant commission.
Okay. Like a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I motion open.
First by Commissioner Freeman.
I'm sorry. It's actually, it's a.
I'm sorry, public meeting.
It's a public meeting.
However, we will have open comments. First by Commissioner Freeman. Second by Commissioner O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. Petitioner, Mr. O'Malley.
Yes, sir. Good evening. All right, it's night. Yeah, just, I think we just made a good idea of the changes that we've made, just a minor name, name change, just to kind of fit with the area a little bit, trying to match along with Windsor. We've also moved the sidewalk over to the west side as opposed to the east side, and we did, did some, a little better visual of the landscaping, so that you can see what that looked like, the sweeping along the east property line there. And I think that's it. I think those are the things we talked about.
Okay, just wanted to verify, from both the petitioner and our staff, it appears to me that this is substantially or maybe exactly what you were asked to do to come back. Is that correct? Petitioner, is your belief that you've accomplished what you were asked?
Yes, it is.
BJ, is that your opinion as well?
Yeah, just wanted to know, with the new street cross-section, the wide away was reduced from 50 to 55 to 50 feet, and they created a 10-foot wide private with landscaping, and that's, that's going to remain private. However, our village engineer says requesting, within the 10-foot private land, the village could have a line deisement for utilities, so that's the only thing we're requesting.
So there will need to be some discussion about the change in width of the public roadway?
No, I just want to keep, it's remained at 10 feet, so just want to make sure the applicant would agree to grant the village a utility easement under the 10-foot strip.
And that's all.
Yes.
Okay. Um, you'll be available for questions, I'm sure.
Yes.
Now would be the time for the public, and thank you again for your patience in waiting all this time. First signed in to speak, Jay Howe.
I was, I was under the assumption that this was about the corner of Hadley and Bell. My name is Judy Howe, and I live at 12546 West Hadley Road. We were out of state when you guys had your first meeting, and we had gotten a phone call this afternoon stating that they were going to be, be discussing Hadley and Bell Road, and that's where our property is at, and that they may.
In the vicinity of Hadley.
I know, but I, I, we, some of the business were going to, like, cut into our property or something. I didn't know that it was strictly these revisions.
But now you understand which property?
Yeah, yeah, I know where the subdivision is going to be at.
So do you have any comments relative to that? I'm sorry you were waiting so long, if not.
No, that's okay, but, um, how would you go about getting something done about Hadley and Bell Road? There's a lot of accidents there.
Well, this is not the time and place for that.
But I'm saying, what do I do to?
The village.
You can come.
Yeah, the village has a public safety committee, that's the committee you should take your concern to. So I would just stop by during the business hours and ask for the village manager, Mike Martins, and he will direct you to the public safety committee.
Okay, thank you much.
By the way, I go through that intersection all the time, and I'm very well aware of the hazard.
Well, something needs to be done, because there's a lot of accidents there.
Okay, next to speak, Kevin, on River, the last name, that's you.
Actually, I'm with the petitioners. Just want to make sure we're, I have a record for you.
Robert? Can't read the last name. You?
Hello, I'm Robertson. I own the property to the west. My, the things I had to say before, pretty much the same things I want to reiterate, is the, the density and the water, which are kind of, one factor is to the other.
Okay, and just to remind you, I hope you were here, all of what was stated at the last meeting is already part of the public record that will go through the village board.
Okay.
But you can repeat for as long as you'd like.
It's been a long enough night. Thank you very much.
John Skibba, Skibba?
Hi, good evening. My name is John Skibba, one of the residences adjacent to the proposed street. Thank you for your time this evening. I'll start off with a question. They presented this, the new plan, and did I hear that correct, that they shrunk the, they brought the street closer by 10 feet to the property line? So they shrunk it in essence from 20 feet to 10 feet? Is that correct? Did I hear that correct? Want me to address that now, or do you want to do all the comments there?
It's up to you. You want to address that right now, it's fine.
So, so the right-of-way was originally a little bit smaller. We've actually increased it, but we moved the sidewalk to the other side of the street. So where the sidewalk was there, now that's moved to the other side. So we have 10-foot foot landscaping, which would have been the same that it was before, plus, plus three feet over to the curb, then the street, and now the sidewalk's on the other side.
So I guess the conclusion was, what was reduced was the right-of-way of the street from 55 to 50. That's where I think he.
Yeah. It was reduced to 50, but now there's a 10-foot, plus the additional 10-foot of private outlot that's going to be maintained by the association. So we've actually reduced the size of the lots by five feet. We've actually moved everything over and reduced lot size by five feet. So between the property lines and the street, how many feet are there total? There's the 10-foot outlot that's going to be owned by the homeowners association, and then it's three feet from there to the curb. So 13 feet, so it was reduced then? Because the total was with the sidewalk and everything was just slightly under 20. I think it was, yeah, I think it was under 20, but there was the bike path there. So this, landscaping is there, too. Okay, thank you. Got a couple more questions. What are the village ordinance minimums, distance between two subdivision entrances? Because this appears like it's going to be less than 100 feet between the two subdivision entrances with the street entrances.
I'll ask the staff if they can refer to it, but this is public comment. If there's an answer available, we have to provide it. I don't know. And the time to study the zoning ordinance, if it's all online before the meeting.
Now, it's actually a subdivision core issue, and we can check with our village engineer and get back to you if you are, if you're going to wrap up this.
Thank you. If one of us is standing on the sheet, thank you. I'll talk to you. As far as the proposed elevation of the street, what is the proposed elevation in relation to, my lot is a full walkout lot, so what is the proposed elevation of the street compared to the lot?
Do you want me to address now? Sure, okay. Yeah, we haven't done the full engineering yet, but the street's going to be a little bit lower than the property line, just because we have to drain down and then take it over to our pond, so it's going to be a little bit lower than like I say a lot, but it'll be a little.
Because the house is on the other side, we were proposed as full walkout lots, that means that line has to be raised significantly, right?
Say it again. So ours, our lots would be probably look out or walkout lots also, because the property draws about 10 feet down, so it's just a natural break from down there, yeah. And then if I can adjust your other comment too, just the distance, there's already an existing street there, so we're just, we're lining up with the street that's already there.
Which is on the other side of the street.
Correct. Correct. Right, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, during the last meeting, the builder mentioned that he has a two-year completion timeline estimate on this. We heard the same one, the developer built our subdivision. Our subdivision was built in 2005, and the builder made the same promises. It is now 2018, and less than 50% of our subdivision is built. So, we've been through this several times. And looking at the builder's website, he currently has eight projects going on, and he has 41 available lots on those projects, about nine models and seven still pending. So there's still quite a bit, including one of them being in Homer Glen, that was Glenview Walk, that was, I believe, started in 2006, if I'm not mistaken. So there's still quite a bit of property everywhere that the builder has to fully develop. So I'm not sure how he's planning on developing this one, the two adjacent subdivisions ours, and the one next to it still have property available, or additional builds there. And I have the information here. Regarding the current proposed road, when we built the house in 2005, the development efforts at that time were that eventually the land would be developed behind our house, and we accepted that. The development efforts at the time were also that the land would be used as a mirror image, meaning that land and the land next to it would eventually bring a subdivision as a mirror image of our current subdivision, it's similar to our subdivision and the subdivision behind it. Have we ever imagined?
You never read again, because I got completely lost in your comment. Could you be more specific? Oh, you referred to that subdivision, I'm not sure.
So our subdivision here, I'm sorry, can you hear me? The proposed, back then, was that these two lots over here, eventually, a similar subdivision would be a mirror image of this subdivision this way. So there would be a street that would come down this way and come back out over here. So there would be houses here, and houses here, eventually. That was the understanding in 2005.
From who?
The developer.
From your developer?
What's that?
From your developer?
No, this is, this is not our development. The developer that went out of business there at the time. There's a, there's a, there's a big difference, and, and I've looked at subdivisions that do have streets in their backyard, there's subdivisions in Timley and everything, but the big fundamental difference here is that this is a road that's being placed behind our property after the fact. Those subdivisions were pre-planned subdivisions up front. So those folks obviously understood that there's a street behind our property, they understood the impact to value of that property, and if you look at those subdivisions, the back lots face the street on both sides. Here, the proposal is that where my property is, there would be two lots, and the driveways would face that property. The front of the houses would face that property. And there would definitely be an impact in value with a structure with a setup like this. Now, if, I know you mentioned, we talked about the economics, and the builders spoke about economics, we were talking about our economics here, but at the very least, we would need the time to hire a sub-appraiser for the subdivision, so that we can have it appraised as it is now, and with any finalized proposal that may be pending here, so that we can have some numbers. And I know a lot of the residents are here today, because it's spring break week, so they're out of town with their kids, but at the very least, I would ask for that time, so that we can get some sort of appraisal. So for today, I would definitely ask that this current proposal be rejected. It is, now the street is?
It will not be tabled for that reason.
Okay, so what reason?
For you to gather information on appraisals, if that's what you're suggesting.
So you're not interested in factual information as to our economic loss, is that what you're telling?
No, I'm saying it's not timely. But proceed.
Okay. Right, and what else?
Last, we have Chris Zalinski.
Hi, good evening, my name is Chris Zalinski, 416951 Windsor. Everything is on the record from last time, I really don't have any other questions. I did, however, drive around Homer Glen, I really didn't see a whole lot of sandwiched houses, meaning in-between streets. You know, all motions put aside here, it does, it's a little bit funny looking, to say the least, so, like I said, I know everything that I said last time is on the record, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Concludes the public hearing, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I motion.
First by Commissioner Cowell.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Coleser. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
So, if I may make a comment, this is not a special use for my situation, it's more of a rezoning, and the only item that relates to property values is number seven on staff report, page six. So we can certainly look at the extent to which property value service would be diminished by rezoning this property, so that's the one that applies to property values, broadly speaking.
DJ, refer another attachment number?
It's the attachment three, I believe is number seven.
Number seven?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Comment relative to those, this property was sold, the subject property, was sold by the heirs of the previous owner. Sometimes it would refer to as a farm, but I lived in an area prior to my current residence where I could view that property, and about all I ever saw, there was a bunch of ducks flapping around. But be that as it may, that was the nature of the property until the death of the then homeowner. This property will be developed at some point in time, and I think we have to understand that, and we're looking at a specific proposal, and we should go forward, you know, either recommendation to accept or deny, with that in mind. Okay, Commissioners, what's in comments?
I know one thing, some of the neighbors bringing up about some of the other developments not being completed or being half-completed for so many years, if it was, if we were to approve this and had to go forward, do we have a way to set our timelines of saying, at least the landscaping between the properties will be completed within next amount of months, or blocking off? I know one of the other concerns with the neighbors was blocking off the access between Duke and Windsor, so the construction traffic isn't going through there for a period of time.
That wasn't really included in the plan, was it?
No, I was just, from what I remember, it was one of the discussions.
It was a discussion, but I'd like, I would like it to be included also, as a point attached
to the motion for consideration.
So if we recommend approval, are you suggesting or recommending that we put a third condition compared to the ones that are already recommended?
Yes.
The blocking of the road between?
Yes.
Duke and Windsor during construction?
Mm-hmm.
And completing the landscaping of Windsor properties within, I don't know, be a reasonable?
I'd like to ask the petitioners, what do you think would be reasonable in that regard, specifically the landscaping next to the Windsor Court property, on that side of the street?
What's the plan? So, as far as the tree line and the landscaping between the road and Windsor Court, we can put that in during the development process, you know, prior to building there, when we put the streets and the curbs and the streetlights and utilities, et cetera. Weather department? Yeah, weather, I mean, but yeah, we can put those in during the development.
It would be normal to put that in in the first six months?
Yes.
Okay, so you would accept the condition to have the roadway completed to that stage, not for turnover, as well as the full landscaping to the east side of the property in the first six months?
Six months to what, though? I don't think he minds doing it, you know, in advance.
So you're looking for a stop date?
I just don't know what, yeah, what would you consider, we want to do something, then?
When you get the site developed apartment, I guess that would be a timeline discussion there, from the engineering.
Well, he might not start right away, though, right? You'd have to do it after, yeah, the streets and everything have to be in, you're not going to.
Maybe one year is a more practical.
I would say at least.
It's more seasonal, that you can't predict.
How about if we do it before the second house permit?
I'm sorry, the second?
House permit?
Yeah.
So we get a model going, and while he's doing the model, he can get all that done, because then he'd be cleaning up everything, and everything will be nice at that point.
Governor, is your suggestion?
I just think with the concern, it takes a while for the trees to mature, so, the current residents on Windsor are already dealing with, you know, half the lots being empty for 10 years from they've been, they don't want to be standing at empty lots, so if you can get the landscaping in as quickly as possible, that way, they, at least they have a barrier, they're not going to have construction on every side of their house.
And I don't think that's a problem, they just, I don't want to say something silly, and then we're putting streets in, and utilities are still going in or something like that, and things are in the way and getting destroyed, we want to do it right and have it nice.
Something that the second house is a good.
Well, was there a suggestion, or DJ's, I'm just looking for consensus.
Yeah, that makes sense. You know, and I just like to address, you know, blocking the street as long as the village fire department's okay with all that, and okay with putting a barrier up there, you know, this is 11 lots, it's not, you know, 111 lots. Just to be clear, too, I was not the developer of Glenview Walk Estates, however, back when it was developed, I bought 10 lots, built houses, and sold off my 10 lots, fortunately before the crash. Then I purchased 12 additional lots, and I would have had all those lots built out, but I'll just go on record, it's the worst homeowners' association in the world. So it'd been really hard to obtain new approvals from that, otherwise I would have had mine. I only have three lots left that are in Glenview Walk Estates, so, when we do say two years, I mean, my plan is not to develop this a little bankrupt, you know what I mean, so.
Would you also, or would the village, I don't know who provides signage, whether it be the building department, the village, the builder, at the entrance to the old subdivision off of Hadley, I would like to see no construction traffic signage, or dead-end signage, so that we do not have issues with trucks of any kind going in there and trying to turn around and come back out. I don't want to see the neighbors inconvenienced any more.
We can put, you know, in the back where we would tie in the Windsor Court back there, you know, we can put one of those big orange, you know, signs there, and one at the, you know, entrance to, I guess, both entrances to Windsor Court, right? The one in the front, and then where it's going to loop around and connect in the back.
Well, in the back, what we're discussing is not having any traffic go through.
Well, if there's a barricade, no one's going to be able to get through there.
Right.
You can't build a construction up on the front, because there's a lot of lots in there that somebody might, what, somebody builds a house there, and now you've told them, you can't, you can't get into your own street. So we can't really do that. I think his entrance is going to be clear, his entrance is going to be clear with the sign that says, hey, come in here, here's Duke Court. I think we can address that, and certainly staff can come out and add another barrier, that's fine, but you can't block off other streets.
So with the issuance of the second house permit, would, did you guys, how much time it would take for you guys to put that landscape barrier up, or what would be reasonable, would work on the permits, or what?
Well, it was suggested, I thought there was some consensus, that the landscaping would be completed by the time the second permit was pulled?
Yes, yeah, I mean, we want to do it as soon as possible, I mean, it's going to help make the community look good, it's also going to screen our community from the other one, which our people are going to be looking for.
I think, you know, win-win.
I do, too.
So that would be one of the conditions that we would enter into any motion.
Is it in your best interest to finish this as soon as possible? Yes, I've already had it a couple of years, I can't say it, thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Need a poll, everybody, I think. If there are no other questions or comments, entertain a motion.
A motion. Well, let me ask this question before I read the motion. Is it necessary to put in the road closing for this? If it expedites, if it expedites this process and gets things moving quicker, would it do, or would it not, if we were to, if we were to block off one of the roads so you can't use it, is that going to be detrimental to getting this process going, or is it? I don't think it's going to affect us, and whether you put it in there or not, I think we can agree to do it, it's not, it's not that difficult. Then, then we'll. Yeah, you know, the problem is if you do it, then the fire department says, hey, no, we can't have this, then, then we're in a trick bag, I think, yeah, we'll agree to do it, I don't think there's any reason we'd ever have to come in that road, we have our own access, there's a driveway there now that we can use. At one point, I mean, we should probably put something in there after what point that barricade would be taken out, right? I mean, these streets are connecting.
Well, it would be some kind of temporary channel. You're not going to, we're not asking to move the wall.
Yeah, I got you, there's big blocks they can put in there, you know. And the fire department should be able, you know, especially if they were put down, you know, we can get some feedback from the fire department, too, like towards, you know, if it's right at the property line or whatever, because we have the street, so they could come down the street, back down the one street, and be able to turn around the, you know. So how do we want this, are you approval conditions, and the condition would be?
It might be better, not making the blockage of construction traffic part of the motion, but rather part of the record, because there's a lot of contingencies there.
I agree.
Sean brings up a really good point, but when you want to put or diminish, it's reasonable, but how do you determine when you take it out? When it's 70% complete, well, that may not be a good point either. I don't know, it just might be part of the record that, you know, the roadway would be blocked for construction traffic at a reasonable point at the start and finish of construction?
During construction.
Well, it could go the way of the Windsor Court, where five or six gets old, and then there's another year where nothing happens, and then another couple, you don't know. That's what I'm saying, you can't really predict what's going to happen, so my thought is that we make it again vague on purpose, that it's just, you know.
I agree.
It would be blocked reasonably close to the beginning, and, you know, stay there until it's reasonable to remove it, and part of the record.
Okay, all right. There's a motion to recommend approval of, one, a planned subdivision, two, a map amendment.
There's a motion to recommend approval of, one, a planned subdivision, two, a map amendment rezoning from A2 Road Residential to R3A Single Family Residential District, and three, site plan for certain variances listed below for proposed Duke subdivision. Modification of variances, A, reduce the required right-of-way for a local road from sixty-six feet to fifty feet, a modification to the Land Use and Site Development Regulation. B, reduce the required front and corner setbacks from forty feet to thirty feet. C, reduce the minimum required lot width from a hundred feet to seventy-six point five. And D, reduce the minimum required lot frontage from ninety feet to seventy-six point five, with the conditions that the applicant is required to submit photometric plans meeting the requirements of the Village Outdoor Lighting Regulations prior to consideration by the Village Board. And two, a final plan and engineering plan will be subject to village engineer's review and approval.
And the third condition relative to landscape?
The third is the ten-foot landscape strip to be completed before the second permit is issued.
Accepted, Brock?
I accept it.
We have a motion, I believe. And a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Please follow the roll.
Okay. Kevin O'Donnell?
Yes.
Brock Backen?
Yes.
Ryan Colzer?
Yes.
Eileen Primm?
Yes.
Beth Bearden?
Yes.
Lynn McGary?
Yes.
Chairman Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion, jurors.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And lastly, we have any reports from the staff?
So since you have two gone outstanding cases, there's nothing for next meeting. So the April nineteen meeting would be canceled. So that's the news.
Yay! I'm going to have a party, it's supposed to be eight that day.
Only happened?
No, it's April. It's going to snow, the white side's going to...
Does that include the staff report? Any reports from commissioners?
I haven't been to a meeting, I don't know anything that's going on.
You can take the time, just ask us now if you like, and get Sean.
Yeah, but I don't like that, I'm a village member.
Oh, would you like to make a motion to the chair?
I'm going anywhere. I'm going to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.